Good evening, and I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on September 27th, 2018. Can everyone please join me with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have a published agenda for this evening. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda and consent agenda items?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and is there any discussion? Saying none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have an agenda. And first up on our agenda is public recognitions and presentations, Compassion is Contagious. Jenny?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight is our third quarter Compassion is Contagious recognition for 2018. We are proud to recognize two outstanding organizations from our community whose efforts have exemplified the true spirit of compassion in Lacey and throughout Thurston County. Our first recognition award this evening is for the North Thurston Kiwanis Group and their incredible support and sponsorship of the Day of Champions. Day of Champions is an inspiring track and field event featuring dozens of activities that showcases the abilities of those with disabilities. This event created in 2003 hosted about 650 eager participants back in May from elementary, middle, and high schools around our region. As you can imagine, an event of this magnitude takes a group of people who are committed and passionate about the cause. At this time, I'd like to introduce the fearless leader of this event, Karen Schessel, committee chair, to tell you more about North Thurston Kiwanis's involvement with Day of Champions, as well as introduce you to the other Kiwanis members in attendance tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for inviting us, and we really appreciate the recognition of our club and this wonderful event. As Jenny said, this is an event that started in 2003 and has been going on continuously every May since then. It's specifically designed and created for students kindergarten through grade 12 who have significant challenges and are always able to participate in organized sports activities. So I could talk for a very long time, and I know my time is limited, so I'm going to share with you some pictures, but more importantly, a video. And I want you to pay particular attention to the smiles that you see on the face of all the participants, as well as the incredible smiles on the face of all of the people that are volunteering that day. Later, I will share with you the community groups, and specifically, the City of Lacey folks, who helped make this event possible. So we will go right into a video from this past Day of Champions at North Thurston High School. So the students all come in on their buses, they're greeted by cheerleaders and key club members, volunteers, military volunteers, high-fiving them, and welcoming them to another fun day. And this year, we had all the mascots from the high schools come as well. So we have key clubs and cheerleaders from all of the high schools in North Thurston, plus Capital, Olympia, Black Hills High School, and Tom Water High School are represented with their mascots. Here's our parade of champions. If you notice, our grand marshal right there was your one and only Scott Egger. I will explain the reason for that later. So all of the students come, they have their school signs, and they have a parade, like a, basically, an Olympics-type parade where they walk around the track, a crazy lady in pink. So as you can see, the point is, there's 19 different field stations, and students are encouraged to interact in any way that they possibly can with the stations. Our military members are from all of the recruiting stations in Lacey, plus JBLM Military Police Company. So as you see, anything goes, and we're just happy that they're all there participating in any way that they can. They get free t-shirts, they get a free lunch, everyone gets metal, it is non-competitive, all-free, all-volunteer event. Little limbo, just for fun. We had, as we said, we had 650 participants, we had hundreds of volunteers. And from the City of Lacey, we had not only the fire department came and set up a station so the kids could wander through the fire truck, get fire hats and fire stickers, the police department and the police volunteers helped with traffic control, parking, Parks and Rec loaned us some equipment for the field, Public Works loaned us the cones that we had to put up to control traffic, and you loaned us your Director of Public Works for the day, so he could be our grand marshal. And North Thurston Public Schools gave us the equipment for the day, their custodial staff, and the Transportation Department at North Thurston Public Schools had volunteer bus drivers and buses to transport volunteers and participants, and people that are coming to watch the event from off-site parking. They did that because they volunteers. So it really does take an entire community. And we have all of our volunteers from the Kiwanis. We do a dance after lunch, they all come on the field and just free dance, whatever they want to do, and it's probably the happiest time of the day, as you can tell. Miss Thurston County came for the day, and that was a thrill for the kids. Little bit of exuberation. Do a little conga line with the cheerleaders, they love the cheerleaders, of course. We call it the Day of a Million Smiles, which basically is an understatement for what we see on this particular day. So just a... I still have a couple more minutes, thank you. I think the video kind of shares it all. But just a few pictures from this past year's Day of Champions at North Thurston High School. As you can see, a lot of people in the parade, just a lot of camaraderie, and the kids just have a great time. As you can see, you know, we've got your Public Works. I'll explain a little bit later why he was there. We have key club from River Ridge High School, some of our Kiwanis alumni, we have Timberline cheerleaders, Olympia High School cheerleaders, some of our military volunteers. And there's many ways that people can contribute to this day, even if they can't be there. As Twin Star Credit Union, they could not get off work to come to volunteer, but they all bought t-shirts and wore their t-shirts as a show of support on the Day of Champions, which I thought was really nice. Over in the other corner is Lynn Neely and I doing a charity golf tournament in Gig Harbor this past hot August day, we won't go into that. And more of our volunteers. And here's how Scott Egger became involved. He is not only your Department of Public Works guru, he is also the president of the Washington Chapter of the American Public Works Association, and they had a conference this last spring down in Vancouver, and the topic was diversity. And he approached me, and he said, "I can't think of a more perfect complement to what we are trying, the message we're trying to send than asking Day of Champions to be their fundraiser cause." So I went and spoke to his assembled group, and they raised $3,000 just by passing the hat at his conference, and I cannot thank him enough for that sort of involvement, which is why he became our grand marshal. So here's just, I know we're running short on time, here's just some of the data. You need to know that every single school district in Thurston County has been represented every year. And this past, we've had, Shelton has sent four schools, and because we are expanding to other counties within the state, we want this to be a statewide program. It's already in Lewis County and still to come, and next year, Shelton is going, the Kiwanis are going to be sponsoring theirs for Mason County. So I want to introduce very quickly Lynn Neely, who's the co-chair of Day of Champions, and without her expertise and her commitment and passion and her technological skills, we could not pull this off. So Lynn wants to share just a little bit, very quickly, some information with you about other ways you can support Day of Champions.
Thank you. So this year, we're going to impact Lacey even more than we did last year, and the way we're doing it is Kiwanis is bringing, whoops, wrong direction. Kiwanis is bringing the International Educational Performing Arts Group Up With People out of Denver, who travel internationally, represent 20 countries. We are bringing them to our community for a week in March to raise money to help support Day of Champions. Up With People actually has cast members, college-age students that come between 17 and 29 years of age. They're going to impact us with the 65 host families that we are going to get out of our community to help host these young people. They are going to contribute over 1,000 hours in one week of community service. So we are working with Deb Clemmons at North Thurston School District to bring in a program that they have for the 7th and 8th graders, it's called Revive Civility, and it's a whole program on how do you deal with diversity, how do you bring community together, how do you have community service, et cetera. And the whole point of this is to have a whole saturated week of focus in our community on bringing our community together. At the end of the week, Up With People will put on a two-hour show at the Washington Center for the Performing Arts, and all of the proceeds from both of the shows on Friday night and Saturday night are going back into Day of Champions. And so we are out there working with business community leaders, trying to raise money, to have them help sponsor, and to help us bring in and sell tickets. Kiwanis is selling tickets like crazy right now, and we want to saturate Lacey and have Lacey be the life story in those hundred students that are coming to our community. We want Lacey to be a part that has the international students come into our community and impact the 7th graders and the 8th graders that actually get to experience those programs. The high school students that we hope to actually influence and do some community service with in the week that they are here, so that they have an imprint of what community service is all about. And so we're really excited about having them come in and to be here and to sponsor them, and I got to say thank you to you, because whether you know it or not, you already gave us part of the money to help us with the Washington Center for the Performing Arts. So thank you very much for that support. And you'll be hearing more about this, because we really want to make the Up With People fever in Lacey and in Thurston County catch on and take off and really bring about a lot more awareness to working together as a community and have these young people tell the story of how you go about and how you do that, and how we bring hope back into our community. So that's our fundraiser for this next year, so that's what we're doing, so thank you.
Well, don't go anywhere. It's really my honor, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, to present the Kiwanis with this 2018 Compassion is Contagious recognition for all you've done and all you're going to do. That is amazing, next year's event. As everyone, hopefully everyone knows, Lacey is the most diverse jurisdiction in Thurston County, and I think it's great what North Thurston Public Schools are doing with their class as well. So keep up the great work, and it's really my honor to be able to give you this recognition. And can everyone from the Kiwanis please come up, so we can, we can all shake your hand?
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Who knows?
All right, we do have one more group to recognize tonight, and that is the South Sound YMCA for the Power Scholars Program. And the Power Scholars Program is meeting a need for under-resourced students in the greater Thurston County area during the summer months, and was present in five classrooms in the North Thurston School District this summer. This program bridges a gap for the learning loss that can occur during the summer break, which can impact the academic success of the kids. And the Power Scholar Program provides a place where these kids can come and learn and grow and just have fun with friends. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Casey Kimmel with the YMCA to come up and tell us more about this wonderful program and partnership with our schools.
Well, hello, and thank you all for having us here tonight. We are thrilled and honored to accept this award on behalf of the youth we serve daily, every summer at Power Scholars. My name is Casey Kimmel, and I've had the pleasure of supervising Power Scholars from our pilot summer in 2016 until today. I'm joined tonight by a few members of our incredible Lacey staff team, Jamie Hudson, Caitlin Sepesian, Lara Putnam, and executive leadership and Kyle Kronk, Sarah Clinton, and we also have some other folks here from the Y to support us, namely Ruth Weigout from our board. Thanks for coming, Ruth. Together, we're excited to share what we've been up to this summer at the South Sound Y. Oh, and I have a clicker. Potential. So we're here tonight to talk about potential. Because we believe in the tremendous power and potential in every child to succeed, we recognize them as scholars. Our mission at Power Scholars is to literally transform the academic achievements, self-confidence, and life trajectories of children living in underserved communities. The scholars we serve are vulnerable in every sense of the word. They come from broken homes, they face multi-generational poverty and food insecurity, they're starved for enriching opportunities and meaningful interactions. Some are homeless, some are foster children, but all of them need a caring adult role model to see their potential to foster their greatness. This is where the Y in Achievement Gap programming steps in. So the South Sound Y has been a nonprofit leader for youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility for over 100 years. Some of you in this room may have been connected to the Y growing up, maybe you learned how to swim in the Y, attended camp, or knew a child who participated in youth sports. Today, we serve countless youth in our before-and-after, school and camp programs, but what makes, but what many people don't know is we have a secret. We know a thing or two about Achievement Gap programming. Ooh, ooh, these are hidden slides, okay. Research, sorry, you saw the hidden ones. Research shows that a lack of summer learning opportunities causes up to 2/3 of the academic achievement gap between children from low-income communities and their higher-income peers. This disparity is among the most pressing concerns facing this country. Children in poverty chronically lag behind their more affluent peers in vocabulary and language skills, and underperform on various metrics, including grade-point averages, state test scores, attendance rates, graduation rates, and college attendance. This disparity, known as the Achievement Gap or the Summer Slide, emerges early and persists throughout a child's school career. At the start of school, kindergartners are now expected to have already mastered skills such as how to write their name, recite the alphabet, count to 10, follow directions, and interact positively with their peers. But a recent report has shown that just 50% of poor children enter kindergarten prepared, compared to 75% of their more affluent peers. Over the summer, low-income students lose approximately two months of reading skills, while their higher-income peers often make slight reading gains. As the years go on, these students continue to fall farther and farther behind without access to summer learning. Think about the opportunities provided to you or your children this summer. Maybe you went on family vacations, enrolled in specialty camp, visited the library or the children's museum, or toured the tugboats at Harbor Days. Without Power Scholars, our children simply would not have the same opportunity. So what is Power Scholars Academy, anyway? It's a summer learning opportunity for children in greater Thurston County, but tonight, we are honoring our Lacey group in particular. We started real small at Lacey Elementary, in Lacey, with about 24 scholars and two teachers, one of them is here, Jamie Hudson, and we actually operated out of St. Mark's Lutheran Church across the street from Mountain View that first summer. It was very hot, no AC. In 2018, North Thurston Public Schools expanded our contract with us to serve 120 youth last summer. Of those 120 scholars, over 100 were recruited from the district's host school, Lacey Elementary. Combined with a staff team of 17 passionate and patient educators, Power Scholars took over five classrooms at Lacey last summer. We run the program for five weeks, offering wraparound care from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, reducing barriers for working families. Breakfast, hot lunch, and snack are provided daily, so students can focus on learning and not hungry bellies. In the morning, certificated educators provide three hours of math and literacy instruction, while the afternoon is filled with fun and enrichment activities in the arts, STEM, and recreation. On Fridays, we take scholars on field trips, bring in guest speakers, some of you were here and did that, thank you, and arrange swim lessons at the Briggs YMCA. These trips are powerful motivators, and often are the highlight of the summer for our scholars, some of whom who have never gotten their faces wet or left the city limits before they let, before they entered Power Scholars. And the best part is every one of our scholars receives a $1,000 scholarship to attend the program at absolutely no cost to their families. The second best part about Power Scholars is it works. We won't have our 2018 results until next month, but in summer 2017, our scholars made incredible gains, two and a half months in math and two months in ELA. Beyond academics, 82% of our educators reported improved confidence in scholars, 97% of families enjoyed the program and recommend it to others, and staff report deep professional development and return year after year to transform lives each summer. Personally, it's been the highlight of my professional career to serve our scholars. There is something so powerful in watching a young person grow in five short weeks, but I still need your help. We invite you to advocate and give and volunteer for Power Scholars. I challenge you to come visit us at the very least. Show us your talents, lead silly songs at opening ceremonies, read to us, come cry happy tears with us at graduation. If you can't donate time, please consider funding one child's tuition or donate educational supplies. More than anything, tell our story, share what you learned today with others. Together, it's our responsibility as a community to reach these scholars and to nurture them until they realize their full potential. In closing, I invite everyone to join me. This is a little alteration of the scholar pledge that our youth recite every morning and every afternoon to start their day at Power Scholars. To them, it's a reminder of the high expectations we set for their success, and to you, it's a promise to make a difference in this community. This is a repeat-after-me pledge. Staff over there are going to back me up. I am a leader.
I am a leader.
I am intelligent.
I am intelligent.
I am powerful.
I am powerful.
I am experienced.
I am experienced.
When the time comes, I will stand up for our community.
When the time comes, I will stand up for our community.
When there is a problem, I will find a solution.
When there is a problem, I will find a solution.
I will listen.
I will listen.
I will empower.
I will empower.
I will foster potential.
I will foster potential.
Because I am a YMCA community superhero.
Because I am a YMCA community superhero.
And now I'd like to welcome the staff to come on up, and thank you guys so much for having us.
So, before I get started, it's always my honor to be able to give out these Compassion is Contagious recognitions awards, and on behalf of the Lacey City Council, I'm going to do that again, but we just have such amazing organizations here in Lacey in our region. Every time I'm able to do this, I'm just blown away with how much caring there is in our community. And if it wasn't for organizations like the YMCA, I just don't know where we'd be as a community. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much. And behalf of the Lacey City Council, it's my honor to give you this 2018 Compassion is Contagious recognition award. Thank you so much.
So again, I just want to thank both groups for joining us tonight, and I'd like to invite all the members that were here in attendance to come next door and enjoy some refreshments.
Thank you.
So thank you, and we'll let all the Compassion is Contagious recognition awardees go next door, and they're going to have some refreshments and some cake or something over there, I think. So next up on our agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda. I didn't see anyone who signed up for public comments not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd have something I'd like to present, if it's appropriate.
So is anyone wishing to address the council on any items not on the agenda? Saying none. Next up is proclamations, and our first proclamation is our National Disability Empowerment Awareness Month proclamation.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas the National Disability Employment Awareness Month celebrates and recognizes the accomplishments in the workplace of men and women with disabilities, and reaffirms the commitment to ensuring equal employment opportunities to all citizens, and?
Whereas in 1945, Congress enacted a law declaring the first week in October each year as National Employee the Physically Handicapped Week, and whereas in 1962, the word physically was removed to acknowledge the employment needs and contributions of individuals with all types of disabilities, and?
Whereas in 1988, Congress expanded the week to a month and changed the name to National Disability, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and?
Whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy, and?
Whereas Washington law calls upon employers, both public and private, to be aware of and utilize the employment skills of our disabled citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities, and?
Whereas the City of Lacey, through the Department of Services for the Blind and other public agencies, and with the cooperative assistance of numerous civic and nonprofit groups, can look forward to a continued expansion of employment opportunities for the greater acceptance of disabled persons in the competitive labor market.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, to hereby proclaim October 2018 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in the City of Lacey, and call upon employers, schools, and other community organizations to celebrate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities, reinforce the value and the talent people with disabilities add to our workplace and communities, and affirm the City of Lacey's commitment to an inclusive community. Signed, myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, September 27th, 2018. Is Yvonne going to come up?
First, we would like to thank Mayor Ryder and members of Lacey City Council for recognizing the importance of National Disability Employment Awareness Month to the economic independence of our friends, families, and neighbors with visual impairments. As many of you may know, Washington State Department of Services for the Blind provides people of all ages who are blind or have low vision with a wide range of services to help them enjoy independence at home, in the community, and in the workplace by providing them with the tools and training needed to find and/or keep good jobs. As our population ages, more and more people will be working with disabilities, creating challenges for businesses of all sizes. challenges for businesses of all sizes. DSB can help provide these businesses with tailored solutions to keep their valued personnel on staff, enhance their hiring of people who are blind or visually impaired, and train their current and future workforces, creating a more diverse and inclusive workplace and community. Again, thank you for your recognition and support of the National Disability Employment Awareness Month. For more information about DSB services and programs for citizens and businesses of the City of Lacy and the state of Washington, please visit our website at dsb.wa.gov. Thank you.
So, we have three proclamations tonight, and our second proclamation is our National Voter Registration Day proclamation.
City of Lacy Official Proclamation.
Whereas registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote on Election Day and?
Whereas the City of Lacy is committed to strengthening democracy by encouraging voter registration and increasing participation in all elections and?
Whereas civic-minded people and organizations have collaborated to establish September 25, 2018, as National Voter Registration Day and?
Whereas the goal for the 2018 National Voter Registration Day is to create awareness of elections and motivate eligible citizens to vote in coming months and?
Whereas the strength of our democracy depends on the willingness of our citizens to participate by choosing the people who will lead us and by voicing their opinions on important matters that will come before the voters on Election Day.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacy, on behalf of Lacy City Council, do hereby recognize September 25, 2018, as National Voter Registration Day, and encourage all eligible city residents to register to vote and recognize and celebrate the day. Signed, myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, September 27, 2018. And our county attorney, Mary Hall, is here.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder and City Council members for sponsoring National Voter Registration Day in this proclamation. You know, voting is a cornerstone of our democracy, but you can't vote if you're not registered. I value our partnership and your commitment to registering as many people as possible in the City of Lacy. And right now in Thurston County, we have 179,959,000 registered voters. Our goal was 180 by the general election. I think we'll get there. And that includes 28,809 in the City of Lacy. So, you're catching up to the City of Olympia, by the way. 2018 is the fifth National Voter Registration Day in Thurston County, and last year, we interacted with 1,100 voters during National Voter Registration Week. So, your effort to help us increase awareness of the importance of registering and participating in our democratic process is very much appreciated. And for those of you in the audience or watching remotely, registering to vote is really easy. You simply go to vote.wa.gov and follow the prompts. You can also go online and change your address there as well. So, thank you again for your support and your partnership on this and so many other important issues. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mary. Register to vote, register to vote. Next up in our last proclamation is Beauty for All Day. This is a proclamation requested by the National League of Cities.
City of Lacy Official Proclamation. Whereas the City of Lacy maintains the largest municipal park system in Thurston County, Washington and?
Whereas the City of Lacy has drawn many residents who were attracted to the natural beauty of the area and who are proud of their gardens and local farms and?
Whereas our natural beauty and our access to Mount Rainier and Puget Sound draw countless visitors each year, supporting our local economy and?
Whereas nature, parks, and green space improve both health and happiness, and a growing population will have need for more of them and?
Whereas we recognize the importance of environmental stewardship and restoration and?
Whereas we recognize October 2, 2018, as the 50th anniversary of the signing of our four beauty bills that have enhanced American life, the Redwoods and North Cascades National Park Acts, and the Wild and Scenic Rivers and National Scenic Trails Acts, with all but the redwoods providing examples in our state and?
Now, therefore, I, Mayor Andy Ryder of the City of Lacy, on behalf of the Lacy City Council, hereby proclaim October 2, 2018, as Beauty for All Day. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, September 27, 2018. And I'm on the board directors for National League of Cities, and so is the deputy mayor, and so we will pass this along to the National League of Cities that we've recognized this day. So, next up is a referral from our Planning Commission, the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendments, and Jessica is gonna come.
So, we have a recommendation to approve the ordinance to adopt 2018 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission, and there are three different amendments as part of this package, so I'll go through them one by one. The first one is the Hogan Bay Properties Private Amendment, and here's a map right here. The Walseth Land Group submitted a Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Rezone application to designate three parcels totaling 22.3 acres from Hawks Prairie Business District Commercial and Business Commercial, and the request is to change it to Commercial, Light Industrial Commercial, and that's a designation that allows a broad range of compatible light industrial and commercial activities. And the purpose of the request is to consider redesignating the property to Light Industrial Commercial to offer a mixture of complementary commercial and industrial services to serve the Hawks Prairie area. Here's another view of what it looks like currently. It's three parcels, 22.3 acres. And the Planning Commission's recommending approval as the Light Industrial Commercial zoning will better support job creation and employment diversification within the Hawks Prairie planning area. It is consistent with the surrounding properties. It will contribute to the designated truck route along Hogan Bay Road Northeast and will support commercial and small light industrial employers to serve the growing residential areas, residential areas in that area. That was the first one. The second amendment in this Comprehensive Plan Amendment is adopting our pedestrian bicycle plan for Lacy and Lacy Urban Growth Area. For over a year, the city has been developing the first pedestrian bicycle plan for Lacy and the Lacy Urban Growth Area. A pedestrian bicycle plan has been a priority action item for the city since the adoption of the transportation element of the Comprehensive Plan in 2012. And the pedestrian bicycle plan provides a comprehensive plan to enhance Lacy's pedestrian bicycle system, and this plan contains an inventory of existing pedestrian and bicycle facilities. It identifies and analyzes existing conditions with a focus around pedestrian and bicycle generating land uses, including schools, parks, residential and employment areas, and commercial nodes. The plan identifies associated gaps and a methodology for prioritizing capital improvements to eliminate those gaps. It identifies potential funding sources and prioritizes measures and projects to implement the plan. This plan will be incorporated into the city's transportation plan to guide the city's investments and other efforts to promote walking and biking as a viable transportation option. The city conducted a robust public outreach and input program for the plan to get feedback from area residents, businesses, and employees. To guide the development of the draft plan, a citizen advisory committee was established, and the role of that committee was to evaluate ideas and information provided by the consultant team and staff. And that citizen advisory committee was comprised of a broad spectrum of stakeholders that ultimately provided their recommended version of the draft plan to the Planning Commission for review. The Planning Commission's recommending approval of the plan as it sets a path forward to improving walking and biking in the community. The third item on your Comprehensive Plan Amendment list is the Depot District Subarea Plan. The 2016 Land Use Element for Lacy and Lacy Urban Growth Area identifies subarea plans as a way to provide for more detailed planning on a geographic basis. The number-one priority area for subarea planning identified in the Comprehensive Plan is an area known as the Depot District, and the Depot District Subarea Plan will provide a cohesive vision for that area. It will also complement city investment in a new museum and depot project. The Depot District Subarea is centered on the area between Pacific Avenue and Lacy Boulevard corridors, and it contains a variety of commercial, residential, and light industrial uses. It's also known as the historic center of the community as the Lacy train station served area residents in recreational uses beginning in the 1890s. Given that this area is one of the oldest in Lacy and most developed, redevelopment will be key in defining the future character of the area. The Subarea Plan will ensure that redevelopment will be high-quality, new projects will be compatible with existing built areas and neighborhoods, including St. Martin's University, and transportation systems will complement the district's future land use. Economic opportunities will be identified that will serve and catalyze private investment as well. The city has used a community-based approach in the development of the draft Subarea Plan by engaging various stakeholders throughout the redevelopment of this draft. This includes targeted outreach to district residents and the business community, the adjacent Lacy historic neighborhood and other stakeholders, such as St. Martin's University. The final Subarea Plan has represented the input of these stakeholders. The plans derive from substantial community, staff, and consultant effort. It responds to community suggestions on multiple topics. The Subarea Plan must address and shaped by expert guidance from urban design, land use, transportation, economics, and engineering professionals. The Planning Commission's recommending approval as the plan provides a meaningful and immediately useful perspective on the district, what to do next and why. In closing, these amendments, these three amendments represent hundreds of hours of community, staff, and consultant time and effort, and were high priority items in the 2018 Planning Commission Work Program.
So, can I get a motion, please?
I move that we approve the ordinance to adopt the 2018 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second. It's been moved in second, discussion. Deputy Mayor?
Well, I just want to say I'm really excited about incorporating our pedestrian and bicycle plan into the Comprehensive Plan, that and our Depot District Subarea Plan. I think that will help it, both of those move forward quicker and be, you know, something that we can build on, so I'm really excited about that.
So, I have a quick question about our, the first amendment. I support the Planning Commission's recommendation to go from Hawks Prairie Business District to Business Commercial and Business Commercial to Light Industrial Commercial. As, thinking about this, this is, I think, at least the third time we've had to do a Comprehensive Plan Amendment and rezone from Hawks Prairie Business District to a different designation. Can you, can you tell me, obviously, for every reason, Hawks Prairie Business District is not working for our private sector, shouldn't we refer everyone back in that zone, back to the Planning Commission, to look at redesigning to a more, more compatible use for the private sector?
That's certainly something you can decide to do. I think the Light Industrial Commercial just offers a variety of uses that seem to be in more demand, and that's why I think you've got so many recommendations for that.
Well, and we keep, we keep having to go back to it, and so obviously, this designation's not working for our?
Quick question on that same topic. Are there any uses, changing the designation, that, are there any uses they lose? Are there any that would have been able to be done under the old designation and not under the new designation?
I wish I had the code in front of me.
Nothing you can think of, though? I mean, there's nothing significant then? You, I mean?
If I can ask Sarah if she's willing to share, do you happen to know off the top of your head? Sarah's been here for a lot longer than I have. Do you happen to know?
Please come up.
Sorry, I'm a pinched up for Ryan today.
Only reason why I bring that, only reason why I?
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I apologize.
I just bring this up because I distinctly remember this council of changing this designation several times.
Several times.
If they don't lose anything, why not just change the whole?
So, I think there are some retail uses that aren't likely allowed in Light Industrial, Light Industrial Commercial that wouldn't be compatible with that zone, and the most recent redesignation from Light Industry, or from Hawks Prairie Business District to Light Industrial Commercial, I think, was just to the north of these pieces. And this piece of property, or these parcels in this area, and these specifically, they're sized in such a way that it requires master planning of multiple parcels, and that's really specifically why these parcels weren't able to develop, because there's a 10-acre minimum for development on parcels in the Hawks Prairie Business District that have really restricted these parcels from being able to go forward with users, because they just can't get the size, and they're all multiple, it's three different ownerships, or this was owned by the same entity as this one, but this one is separate, and so trying to get those three together to work at the master planning requirements is difficult.
Well, maybe we should, maybe this, maybe at our next joint meeting with the Planning Commission, we should talk to them about looking at this designation and the rest of this Hawks Prairie Business District to see if we can make it a little bit easier for?
I would say that the Hawks Prairie Business District does have some significant design standards that might make design of sites more challenging for developers. However, there's a wide array of uses and opportunities available. It's one of, it's almost in the league with general commercial in terms of permitted uses, so it's not, it's not like a use restriction, because there's so much available to be able to be constructed.
Except about how much needs to be master planned from the get-go.
Right, right.
So, is there other smaller parcels when the Hawks?
Not really.
I know we're getting off topic, but?
Yeah, I mean, there's not really. Most of the other parcels seem to meet the size requirement for the, so that they don't have to try and get?
Multiple?
Yeah, yeah, onboard with an adjacent developer.
Well, thank you, that makes me feel a lot better.
It would be nice to be able to have some kind of a work session that talks about pros and cons of moving kinds of zones, because I get, I'm always leery about changing zones after we've done it, and in this case, it seemed reasonable.
Or if there's other zones out there that we're struggling to develop in, maybe let's take a look at why we're doing that.
Yeah, and I mean, I think there's been some discussion. We have a lot, a wide variety of commercial zones in the city, trying to figure out, you know, reducing the number of zones and just making it more, more commercial zoning in a lot of other rural areas.
Consulate?
You kind of took my comment, having, working near there and having done some business up there. I think in how quickly the market changes, and then that area is such a great place for commercial, I think just demonstrating our history of flexibility and advertising our flexibility, I think, is the biggest opportunity that you have so that developers can say, hey, there's a lot of flexibility out here we can apply for, and I think that that will draw even more than, than spending a lot of time saying, well, it should be this or it should be that.
Yeah, just allow it for more flexibility.
There also is just, in most of the Hawks Prairie Business District, there is one main property owner group as well that has been slow to be able to develop in the Hawks Prairie Business District as well. That's limited, I think, growth in that area or development in that area.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Well, maybe we'll, I think the city manager's writing some stuff down to help us out in the future.
Sorry for putting you on the spot.
Yeah, sorry, but thank you for the, thank you for letting us know about that, too. I just thought maybe there's an opportunity for us to refer something back to the Planning Commission, but other than that, there's been a motion, and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved in second to approve this ordinance to adopt the 2018 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission?
I thought there was a comment on it.
Do you have a, is there a comment?
Of course.
Okay, go for it. Please.
I was gonna let it pass, but I just, I know the Planning Commissioners invested a lot of time and energy, and staff as well did, and I just really want to thank them for that effort, because this was a heavy lift to get here, so, thank you.
Yeah, the bicycle and pedestrian plan in the Depot District, there's been multiple years of, and massive outreach, and I've heard great things on both of them, too, so?
The community involvement.
The community involvement's been wonderful. So, given that?
Celebrate success.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
So, next up is resolutions, and the first resolution is the NRC Transit Ballot Proposition. I'm gonna turn this over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you know, the council policies provide a process for requesting council action by resolution. Such a request came in on the 17th of August this year. It was requesting council support of intercity transit authorities, Proposition Number One, to maintain, improve, and expand public transportation services. So, this request was considered by the full council at last week's, or two weeks ago, the last council meeting on the 13th, and a motion was made and passed directing my office to prepare a resolution. So, before you today, for your consideration as a resolution, is a resolution in support of intercity transits, Proposition Number One. I need to remind council that typically, it's against state law to use public facilities to, for such an action. However, there are exceptions. That exception would be allowed, provided that an equal opportunity is afforded to any members of the public opposing the? any members of the public opposing the position, either for or against, to have an opportunity to speak on that behalf. So, as long as that's provided, the resolution is before you for consideration.
So, I'm going to open this up first to public comment. There's been a few people who signed up. The first person is Michael Rogers. If you could just come over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the rest of the council. My name is Michael Rogers and this lady is my wife, Emily Rogers, and she's on their first, she's the best part of our family, for sure. But I claim here today to ask you to support the transportation package for two basic reasons. Without it, I don't go anywhere and I go everywhere, right? I don't want to roll all over town. I roll all over town because I use transit. I can't use transit, or without transit, I can't go anywhere besides using my wheelchair. And it's kind of that simple. That's how I get where I need to get. And then, I go until she says it's time to go home. It's kind of funny that you were about to call on it, because I was worried about, you know, dial-up is picking us up tonight. And it seems like a simple thing, somebody's giving us a ride home. There's a 15-minute window either way. At least I have an opportunity to go somewhere or get where I want to go, including here. See, I will come more often. First of all, I thought this whole thing was awesome tonight with what, since I have a disability and you did what you did, thank you for that, on a side note, Mr. Chair. And I hope I'm not out of order. The other piece of it is, if we don't do something, what next? What's next is we're going to cut service. What's that going to do? People that work can't get to work. I work for the state and I'm about, what are we, about 10, 15 minutes away? But without a way to get to work, I'm kind of unemployed, even though I've worked for 21 years. It's kind of like, simple, but it's not so simple. There's buses. It isn't just riding the bus. It's having the ability to do what we want to do in life. You know, if we say no transportation, what kind of values are we going to have in places that we're going to be able to go to? I mean, I can't imagine us saying no transportation. I mean, really? How many of you drove here today? Oh, I don't want to, I guess I'm not supposed to ask questions. But if you don't drive, how do you get around? You walk or you roll? And I roll in both places. And I'm asking you to support IT so they can roll so I can roll. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Emily, would you like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Emily Rogers and I'm very pleased to be here. 13 years ago, Michael and I moved to Thurston County because it was too expensive up in King County to live. And even with our full-time jobs and, and our full lives, we couldn't afford to live up there anymore. So, we looked for a really pretty place to live and where we could access our work and have a life outside of work. And we showed up in Thurston County and have lived in the home that we own along with the bank for nine years. And, and I just want to encourage you to, to vote yes on this resolution, because it's super important for so many people. People with disabilities, people who are lower income, people who just don't want to drive cars. You know, it might be rare, but I knew, I do know a few people who just do not want to have the stress of driving a car. And I'm hopeful that we can live in this area for many years to come and that we would be torchbearers for what great things are to come. And one of those things is to support what we have as far as transit goes now and also for the future of transit here in Thurston County. And just, just remember that some of us are dependent on the transit system for a big piece of our lives and the happiness of our futures. And so, we're grateful for your support. Thanks.
Thank you. We have one more person who's signed up to talk on this resolution. It's Supiers. That was very good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm here today as a Lacey resident. I've lived here in Lacey for the past 22 continuous years. And for 16 of those years, I've been commuting to Tacoma for my work. My employer moved our small office to Tacoma 16 years ago, so he could be near his family most of the time. And as a result, I started taking what was then called Olympia Express. It helped me avoid that awful merge smurd that went on at the city center exit, the one they're currently trying to repair. So, I'm here tonight to speak in support of the proposition and to ask you to support the proposition through your resolution tonight. Intercity transit works hard to meet the needs of the community. They work hard to listen to the citizens of Thurston County and do what they can. Unfortunately, federal budgets over the years have reduced the monies that have come to transit systems. And that puts a real pinch on the work that they do and the buses that they can provide and the additional work that they can do. This, this proposition is going to allow them extra budget, not for extras, but to maintain and improve with the growth in the area. And I just would like to encourage you to support intercity's proposition with your resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on this resolution? Can you please state your full name?
My name is Don Melnick. I live at Panorama. And as many of you know, I have a role in intercity transit, but I'm not here speaking on behalf of that. I'm a senior, turned 80 this year, and I can see a time when I won't be able to drive. I think transit's going to be really critical in allowing we seniors to remain mobile and make us live longer practically put. Think the unique thing about this effort, though, is it wasn't dreamed up in the halls, four walls of intercity transit. It came from reaching out in the community and trying to figure out what was needed and then tried to respond to that. As you know, the transit did respond as much as could be done in the near term with North Lacey's problems. So, I encourage you to endorse the effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, there's no one else here to give public testimony? Is there a motion for us to pass this resolution in support of this ballot measure, Proposition Number One, for the intercity transit?
I move that we pass a resolution in support of such ballot proposition, Proposition Number One.
Second?
It's been moved in second, discussion. Lenny?
I'm going to, I'll keep this really brief, because everyone's heard it so many times in the past. My position on this will be the same as it is every time we have one of these resolutions in front of us. I still believe it's inappropriate for us as an elected body to be voicing our opinion on something that's going to come before the voters. I think as individuals, it's perfectly acceptable. And there's been many times when I've supported things personally, although I don't believe as a council, we should be voting on this. So, for that reason, I will abstain from the vote, because I don't believe we should be voting on this at all.
Councilmember?
So, wow, I think it was great, well, really good, public forum, and it was wonderful to see the beautiful couple tonight testify to it and the others as well. Thank you for being here for that. And for that, I appreciate this activity. But I am a council member at large, which means I represent all the citizens. So, I won't be able to weigh in on a resolution for this and represent them, because this is going to the ballot. So, I'm going to let the voters decide on this and stay out of, out of that and recuse myself from that. I also had to make a little picky note here, because it's my job, is that the recommendation on the agenda tonight said after taking into account any comments made, after taking into account, determine whether or not to pass a resolution in support of such a ballot. But there was no consideration of passing a resolution against the ballot. And I think that those, maybe if there was a group here, which there's not, that we should have been prepared for that. But it's moot on that. And again, I applaud the testimony tonight and I encourage all the voters out there to vote and vote their conscience. Thanks.
So, just to clarify, Councilmember Hearn's, if, if we wanted to take, if this council wanted to take a, a resolution or to go against this proposition, it would have had to been voted on by a majority of this council two weeks ago to bring forward something to go against it. That didn't happen, which is why we did, that process didn't happen. Okay. Deputy Mayor?
So, I really support this, because one of the things that, ever since I've been on council, that has come up is Northeast Lacey does not have transit. Now, it's not, the resolution, the prop one isn't as great as I would personally like to see it. It doesn't go far enough out. But it's at least a start and it would get people to at least not have to drive the six to eight miles or something that they have to drive in town to even potentially pick something up. And, you know, I have ridden transit for a number of reasons. One time, I was on crutches and one time, I wasn't able to get back home, so I caught the bus. And it's just a, it's a convenience. It's important for seniors. It's important for those that are disabled. And it's also really important to cut out driving all the time and, and for greenhouse gases. So, I'm a strong supporter of this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that there's a reason why lawmakers made, you know, a few exceptions to the rule, if you will. And in this account, I believe anytime you can have a discussion, a further discussion, you know, leave no stone unturned, if you will, it just benefits everybody, especially the educated voter at the ballot box. Go ahead.
Okay. I've been lucky enough to be our council's representative to intercity transit since January. And I've learned so much about what this transit system does for our community. It touches on people's lives in so many ways. And we've been through budgets, we've been through community surveys, we've had like 10,000 responses. And the overwhelming thing we've had from two different sets of polling is that people want more and better service and they're willing to pay for it. Lacey actually will benefit probably more than any other community. And that's why I feel so strongly that it's important that our council take leadership to say to our community, this is a good thing for Lacey. You know, it will make lives better here. And, you know, particularly out in the area where we were just visiting tonight, talking about the zoning change, this area will start getting bus service that will get employees out to these work sites. This is something we haven't been able to do in the past and it is something that will just benefit everybody. Jubilee will finally be able to get dial-up service, not tomorrow, but in a few years. So, I really... So, I encourage my colleagues to vote yes on this tonight. And I hope those who are listening and here in the audience tonight will take this very seriously, because, you know, the sad fact is, is this does not pass. Next year, we're going to have to start cutting services by 15 to 18 percent. And it's not to punish the voters, it's because the faster you make the cuts, the less you have to cut. So, thank you.
Councilmember?
Yeah, I feel really strongly about this as well in support, because for many, many reasons. But one of the main ones is our housing crisis and the lack of affordable housing in the community. If these, if this doesn't pass and services end up getting cut, more people won't be able to get to their jobs and won't be able to afford their homes. And then again, we have, we would have more homelessness. And that is something that we just can't afford in our community. So, transit is just extremely important so that people can get to work, can get to school, can contribute to society, which benefits all of us, including the city, in the form of taxes and things like that. So, I just don't see how anyone wouldn't support this proposition.
Thank you. So, as I, too, understand where Councilmember Greenstein and Hearn are coming from, this is a ballot measure that's going to come from the people. But I've said this before, I do think that the people that elected us to make decisions on behalf of themselves in the city of Lacey look towards us for guidance. And if this was a proposition that was going to hurt them, they would expect for us to be against it. If this is a proposition that's going to help our greater, our citizens, then they would expect our city council to be in for it. And as has been stated here, this is obviously something that the city of Lacey is going to be the biggest beneficiaries of this ballot initiative by finally bringing service to Northeast Lacey. And so, it would be very difficult for me to stay out of a decision like that. So, and we obviously see other junior taxing districts support resolutions. The North Hurson Public School Board just passed a resolution, support of Lacey's Proposition One, our Parks District. So, we see this happen. This is not something that's new. And so, for that, I'll be voting for it. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved in second to pass this resolution in support of intercity transit ballot proposition, Number One. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Two abstentions. The motion carries. Thank you. Next up is our Hazard Mitigation Plan. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Tom Palmetier from Public Works. I'm here tonight to represent a number of city employees to ask you to consider a resolution to adopt the 2018 Lacey Hazard Mitigation Plan Annex to the Thurston Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. The regional plan update started in 2014 and was approved by FEMA in 2017. We are one of about 15 jurisdictions that are required to update our annex. The overall goal of our annex is to identify risks and vulnerabilities that will protect people and property and to communicate priorities for funding in terms of pre and post disaster The city of Lacey Annex update focused on updating the profile information on city growth and development. Additionally, city planners looked at hazard mitigation planning as it's incorporated into our existing plans. Staff reviewed and updated our mitigation initiatives from the last edition. And finally, they focused on developing public outreach for emergency preparedness. The mitigation initiatives review, including updating our top six initiatives, it removed five initiatives from the old annex and deleted two that were no longer needed. And then, finally, it created 13 new initiatives for the future. This plan's been through an extensive review process. In March 20th and April 17th, it was discussed at the Planning Commission Work Sessions. And then... And then on May 1st, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the, on the subject. On May 11th, the Washington State Emergency Management Division approved the plan. And on May 22nd, it came before the City of Lacey Land Use Committee. Finally, on July 5th of this year, the plan is approved by FEMA. And just recently, as of today, we did our final review, and the final review resulted in one, of one-page adjustment. You'll, you have been provided a copy of that. One of the tables emitted project number, initiative number 15 on the table. So we included that in this update. A copy, as I said, has been provided to you. But all 19 initiatives are listed in pages 40 through 58 of the annex. While there are many staff members involved in review of this update, I would like to send kudos and thanks to our senior planner, Sarah Schelling, who took the plan that we gave her and proved it tremendously, got it approved by the state, and got it approved by FEMA. Thank you, Sarah. This plan will help the city and its citizens to be more prepared for hazards in the future. Having an updated plan ensures the city will be compliant with federal requirements to receive pre and post-disaster funding. Without this plan, we would not be eligible. So in conclusion, city staff recommend the council consider a resolution to adopt the 2018 Lacey Hazard Mitigation Plan Annex to the Thurston Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Can I get a motion, please? I move to adopt the resolution, the 2018 Lacey Hazard, Hazard Mitigation Plan Annex to the Thurston Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Moving second and discussion.
I have actually one question and one comment. On number 15 on that, the one page that you gave us?
Right.
So talk a little bit about how that would, how that would interact with, for instance, if NFPA code, national code, started calling for sprinkler systems in homes. I know it was something that had been discussed, the fire district, and I had met with them. How would that affect? Would that mean we would then change our code to meet that automatically? Or would that be something that would still come before for a vote? I'm just curious.
It's a good question.
The way I read this, it says continue to adopt and enforce the most recent international code series, building all the codes in development and construction and current codes. So if the code changed, we would still continue to pursue enforcement of the building codes? Is that?
Doesn't really answer my question. And it may be a question more for, for legal counsel, I don't know, but is it that we would automatically make that change, or would that be something that would still come before us?
Well, so far, the international building code has made that an optional implementation so far.
Mm-hmm.
I think this is more in vain of as...
I'm just using that as an example, though. I get that it's optional, but what if tomorrow they made it, you know, part of the code?
Right, that'd be a discussion point for council as you reviewed that.
That's all I'm asking is, would, it would, it wouldn't happen automatically, it would still come before this body for a decision.
Right.
That's not how this reads, though.
But I think in general, what we're talking about is that anytime earthquake standards are upgraded, and that is, it's basically trying to recognize the fact that building code standards have increased safety and reduced damage, that type of, and you're right, those sections do involve the example that you put forth, but so far, it has been a voluntary option.
But if it changed...
Not really answering my concern.
No, 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 I understand, but every time the international building codes comes to our council, I mean, it would have to be a discussion point about, yeah.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because it says adopt and enforce the most recent. It doesn't say that we would have any decision-making on that, and that's why, and I, that's, the fire sprinklers are just an example, and this could be anything. I just, I'm just, I wanna know that there would be some discussion, some council action before that would just happen because they changed code, because...
Would it be helpful, then, if we said continue to consider adoption and enforcement of the recent international codes?
That would be very helpful for me personally.
May I ask a question, though?
Continue to pursue adoption, or, you know, you can even go that far, but...
Yeah, anything that would get it to me, just so there's a discussion. I'm not saying I would or wouldn't support it, but I want, I want us to have that ability to discuss it before it happens.
Is this covered in our comprehensive plan?
I thought the international code series was, even though we pass it, it comes before us, it is sort of expected to pass it because we're sort of under, you can maybe speak to that. I thought we had to do it.
Well, actually, Wade Duffy, the building official, would be your subject matter expert in this case. I can speak to American Water Works Association and a number of other codes.
A diversity.
But, you know, the city manager was spot on, and typically, when there is a requirement, you know, that the IBC adopts, we typically adopt it. When it, I just finished two days of emergency management training specifically related to water and wastewater, and when it comes to resiliency, you know, you, you have a whole toolbox of choices from the low-cost end to the high-cost end, and every community has a decision in where, you know, you're gonna select your resiliency tools at. You know, I mean, if it's unaffordable, it's unaffordable. So I'm not specifically asking, answering your question here, but I don't see the IBC requiring codes that are above and beyond the norm. There is no such thing as an earthquake-proof building, there's no such thing as an earthquake-proof pipeline, so...
Sure.
Hope that helps.
Yeah. I guess that makes sense, especially on the hazard side, but I, I agree where you're coming from. There's a bunch of things that could be suggested that you do.
Absolutely, and considered, and that's why I would want us to have that ability to consider it. I just wouldn't want it to be forced upon us without consideration, without discussion.
So if I made the change to continue to consider adoption and enforcement of the most recent international code, would that be sufficient?
I would be perfectly comfortable with that, absolutely.
That's fine as well.
Yeah. I'm just looking, all I want is for us to have that ability to have that discussion, that's all.
So do we, do we need a motion adopting number 15? Do we need that, or can we just include?
Well, we already have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, but I know, but...
So I was just made aware that, I didn't have this extra copy, that's why.
Oh.
Oh.
It was lost a little bit. Was this inclusive in the motion?
This was part of the motion, or, so we're just, would we be, would we be just...
Amendment to the motion suggesting the modified language is articulated by Tom, that would need to be going on, and then that would amend the motion, and then go to the motion.
So I would move that we amend, that, before I do this, move that we amend the motion to make those changes to number 15.
Just for clarification, the information that was in your packets was the draft from May 18. It said draft on it. So we made, we've changed that to incorporate this new page. We can add this language that you say here, and then we're gonna remove the term draft.
Okay.
And that's the one we ask you to adopt.
Yes.
So there's been another motion now to amend the motion before?
Yeah, yeah, I got that. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved in second to change the language under number 15 to say, continue to, can you replay? Consider adoption enforcement of the most recent, the international code series to ensure that we deal in reconstructions are to current codes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now we're on to the full motion.
I do have one other comment on that.
Go ahead.
On number 17, actually, and this is not a question, just a comment. I was recently with Fire, the Lacey Fire Chief, Steve Brooks, and, and just because this talks about working with our, with our neighbors and such, they are actually starting a program right now for doing earthquake training for neighborhoods and such, similar to what Jubilee, we had Jubilee out at one time, remember? They're starting a program where they're actually inviting some homeowners associations and such to do that, so you may wanna reach out to them because they are actually doing this like right now. They actually are planning their first two-day session in November. So just thought you might wanna know about that.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded to adopt this hazard mitigation plan and forward, forward it. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next up on our agenda is ordinances, our business license model ordinance. Troy.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Ryder. Good evening, council. The ordinance for your consideration tonight will amend Chap., LMC Chapter 5.12 relating to business registration. Really, the impetus behind this is a legislative bill that was passed in 2017. It's engrossed House Bill 2005, and it's, the intent of the bill is to improve the business climate by simplifying the administrative process for basically running a business. So there are three main bill requirements. The first is to adopt a model license ordinance by the end of the year. The second actually requires cities to join one of two online business license systems. One is the state system, the BLS system, which Lacey is already a member, or the File Local Program, which is a program that's run by the four largest cities in the state. So we've already accomplished that. And then there's a separate process that we'll see either later this year or early next year relating to the provisions of the BNO tax service apportionment calculation. So again, we will be addressing that later, either this year or beginning of the year. So this all really kind of started in the summer of 2017. Association of Washington Cities put together a task force that really looked at this business license issue. They worked throughout the year and actually came up with the business license ordinance this summer, so of course, we're bringing it to you. So looking at the, the ordinance itself, the requirements are that any business located outside of the city, so no physical presence or location within the city, must conduct $2,000 with a business activity before the cities can require a license. The, the ordinance also provides options for those, those businesses impacted. The city can either exempt them completely from licensing requirements or require a registration process that has no fee. The ordinance also maintains the city's ability to require licenses for those businesses located within the city without any regard to a minimum requirement. The ordinance also does provide for flexibility if we wanted to provide a higher threshold for those businesses located outside the city. And it also provides a definition for engaging in business, and this is really to provide consistency between a licensing requirement and a BNO tax requirement. So the definition, it's before you, basically mirrors the BNO tax definition. So in terms of the actual timeline and requirement, we are required to adopt this before the end of the year, or we lose our authorization to require business licenses. Our, our actual deadline is actually a little bit sooner than that because we are partnering with the business license service with the state. They have a 75-day notice before they can make any change, so that actually puts our deadline at October 17th of this year. I did take a look at the impact that this would have, so thinking about our business license fee revenues, I'm looking through the first three quarters of 2017, this is right around a $15,000 impact, so not a big dollar impact, but it is a pretty large impact in terms of how many businesses this impacts. It's about 1,500 businesses, so think about that relief in terms of the business community. So, you know, that's certainly deemed a good thing. So the recommendation for staff is to adopt ordinance which establishes the engaging in business definition as drafted by the task force. It also sets the minimum threshold for businesses located outside of Lacey at $2,000. There is no requirement for any sort of registration without a fee. So this obviously brings us into compliance of state code, and also is very consistent with Lacey's business-friendly environment. So again, that's the staff recommendation. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Move that we adopt the proposed ordinance, adopting the provisions of the business license model ordinance?
Second. It's been moved in second, discussion?
Yeah, a couple of questions for you, Troy. One, you said we have two options on the under 2,000, whether to not have registration at all or to have them register. You're recommending to not have them register at all, correct?
That's correct.
Just 'cause that would just be staff work with no money coming in to cover that, right?
That's, that's one way to look at it. So in terms of the, the regulation and the difference between an inside and outside business, it really has to do with zoning, checking the zoning, make sure that the applicant complies with that, as well as a, a light police background check. And we don't really have the same concerns with businesses aren't located here in Lacey as we do those that are here, so, correct, we do not recommend any sort of regulation.
And the other question I had on that is, should we be considering a higher threshold than that 2,000? Because you said that's the minimum, right, but it could go higher. Would you recommend that we look at something higher than that, or are you good with that number?
I don't at this point. The, the discussion with the, the cities that run a task force and the Association of Washington Business, it really revolved around those businesses that may come into your city just once. The example that was used was a furniture delivery type of exchange. So, you know, think about a, a company that's coming into your city delivering a, I don't know, say a $1,000 couch. For them to have to go through that process and incur business license fees, you know, was deemed burden, you know, overburdenous some. So that was the example that was used during those discussions. And we do have an opportunity to look at this. In fact, one of the provisions of the ordinance I didn't mention was this is to be looked at every four years.
Excellent.
So really, the recommendation is to, you know, run, have it run its course, decide how it's working, and, and we can make adjustments at that four-year period. And that will be done statewide through the model ordinance process, really for consistency's sake across the state, so it makes it more simple for business.
Thank you. This is a great move for business in general, just to make it easier.
Councilwoman?
This seems to be a four- or five-year effort of consolidating, making things simplified, certainly because of the digital age and its ability to do that. Do you see any other steps towards such improvements and simplification on the horizon, or do you think we're getting closer?
I don't see anything immediate, you know, but this will be, I believe, an ongoing conversation. You know, we're trying to make things as easy as we can for businesses, and, you know, the, the BNO tax will be, I believe, a much larger discussion, has a much broader impact on business. So I think the real discussion will happen here at the end of the year, first part of the year, but, you know, I think the business community as well is very accepting of this. It, it is a good move, and, you know, there is opportunity to relook at this in the future. So, but certainly within, you know, the short term, I don't see anything further, but certainly in that four-year horizon, I'm sure there'll be more discussion.
So going back to what you just said about the BNO tax, is this really just giving them a $2,000 exemption to start off with? Because say you come in once and you do $1,500, right, so now you don't, don't qualify, you're not paying BNO tax, you're not doing, but you have a second, now you're at, say, $3,000. Are you, are you paying that on retro, or are you starting from that $2,000 forward?
Well, the, so the BNO tax...
Yeah.
...mod ordinance, it actually has a threshold of $20,000 before the tax applies, so in your example, that, that doesn't occur.
Sure.
But in the event that they do exceed that $20,000, it, it is a retro, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure how we'll treat the business license piece. I think there'll be probably two options. They could look at the previous year's activity and make that determination, or they can make a determination looking forward that they will indeed need a license. But it's, that's more of an administrative enforcement issue versus, you know, what we're looking at in the ordinance.
Okay, got it, thank you. Is there any other discussion? I'd just say it's a win for commerce and community alike, that's it. Yep, okay. And it's been moved in second to amend the Lacey municipal code for the business registration. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is the mayor's report, and I'm gonna take a little personal privilege and tell you, right before I, I came to this council meeting tonight, I was at the Lacey Community Center, and it was the annual meeting of the Lacey Historic Society. And they were honoring Shirley Jezzek with a, say, a lifetime achievement. She just recently turned 90 years old. Our former city manager was the emcee there, and he was doing a great job. And Shirley Jezzek lives on, on Lacey Street, and so I've known her my entire life. Literally, she used to babysit me back when I was a kid. So she's the last house, I'm the first house, and so she's had just a profound... the first house, and so, um, she's had just a profound impact on me over the years, and so, um, I just wanted to let this council know, you know, she's really an icon of this city, she's been on Lacey Street, she's for 60 years, plus years, and so, and heavily involved in our community and preserving its history, very active on the Historic Society, on Historic Commission over the years, and has been a champion for, of course, our, when the museum was, or the old city hall was moved to its current place, the Historic Society had a big involvement in that. Historic, Historic Society was really involved in moving the Gallagher House next to the, what's now our Lacey Museum, which is, I think, this council knows, was my relative's house, so, um, obviously, she's done a lot to preserve Lacey's history, and I just wanted to give her a shout-out and thank her, thank her for all the years she's dedicated to the City of Lacey. So, given that, um, it's now into the city manager's report, do you have anything?
I have no report.
Then, we'll go straight on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor.
The only one that I have is Jazzcom, and we met on September 6th. We reviewed three Jazzcom policies. One was the rules and procedures, it was discussed, and a few additional changes were proposed. This will come back to, at our next meeting. The other one also will come back, it's the reserve and contingency fund, it was discussed. And then, um, the policy on donations was passed. The lead field officer gave an update on the cat mutilation case, which is now up to 13 cats, and they're following, following up on some really good leads, but still haven't identified anyone.
Has there been any new ones in the few weeks ago, correct?
Correct. There was one that was a potential, but they did not feel it was, as far as I know, and I may be updated the next meeting I go to. At the, that time, that, of our meeting, it was the offer to, which, that would result in a conviction if they would come forward with some information, was up to $46,000. I think that might be even higher now, but I'm not sure. The other news is our executive director, Rick Torgenson, announced that he is leaving to take another job, and his last day was September 21st, and the City of Lacey will help with finding a replacement. And in the meantime, Heather Liu, who is, who's the shelter manager, will cover the position in the interim. And that's unfortunate, because in the last three years, he's kind of helped bring staff and everything together with, you know, moving forward in a more dedicated manner and stuff, but there was reasons why he felt he needed to move on. And I think Lawton and Orca was already mentioned last meeting when I was gone.
Yes.
So, that's my report.
Councilmember Young.
So, I will be reporting on Thurston Thrives. We met on September 17th, and Erin Hall from the Olympia Master Builders presented on the economic impact of affordable housing. She basically reiterated once again how we have a lack of supply of affordable housing, and if we have more affordable housing, it will positively impact the local economy. And then, we had a pretty robust discussion on the emphasis of Thurston Thrives and what our common goal will be for the next three to five years. There wasn't a, a decision made at that meeting, but at the next meeting in October, we will be deciding on the emphasis, which I'm pretty excited about. I personally think it should be housing, as most of the coordinating council agrees with that, but they may be, um, there may be a nexus point with not just housing, but also education and economy, so it may be three different goals that kind of coordinate together. And that's basically what the decision is, is if it should be just housing or that, the other thing with the three different goals. Anyway, so that's my report, and next time I will report on ADC. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Greenstein.
I have no report this evening.
Councilmember Hearn.
So, LTAC is, um, halfway through deciding the 2019 budget, we have some presentations tomorrow, and we're also looking, trying to expand our board to include, Scott, is it one more or two more hoteliers?
One hotelier and one percent organizer of events.
One hotelier and one event organizer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Scott. So, we're looking to expand our board for next year, but LTAC's on the move and looking forward to having a budget pretty soon for next year.
Thank you. So, do you not have the required number of people there right now to give a full recommendation?
So, we have a quorum, because we have three of the five, but we still have two vacancies.
Okay. And it's, is it way too late for you to want to get involved at this point?
It's not too late to be part of the board, but the decision-making process is going to occur tomorrow.
Okay, got it. Anyone tonight?
One way of saying it's probably too late.
Another compulsive volunteer.
Uh, Councilmember Stedman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have no report, but I did want to bring some awareness, everybody knows I'm pretty heavily involved in the American Legion and the VFW, and, um, there's a, this initiative that was started back in the early 20s, it'll go over what I'm reading on the back here, but this is the Gold Star Luminary Initiative, and it's to keep memories of people lost in, in involvements and conflicts in war, and I'll, I'll give a little brief here about it, so, uh, on Gold Star Family Day, we come together to honor these, those who have lost a loved one serving in U.S. military by lighting a luminary on the last Sunday in September. Throughout America's history, from the Revolutionary War to the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, families have seen their loved ones heed the call of duty, and with that duty comes ultimate burden that these families must bear. Lighting a luminary on Gold, Gold Star Family Day lets them know that they don't, they're, they're not alone in their, you know, their experiences. The communities, in communities large and small, organ, organizations and individuals honor these families from citywide events to single luminaries at the end of a one's driveway. Communities, service clubs, churches, church groups, military organizations all participate, and they all need leaders, someone who will coordinate the day's events and send out a call to action, and that's really why I'm, I'm bringing this awareness, because I really believe in, that in years to come, we could see a city, the, the Lacey, our, our city full of these luminaries on the last Sunday of every September. Having said that, I'll, I'll just, um, last, last little bit is, Gold Star Family Day is the last Sunday in September each year. To learn more about what you can do, visit www.luminaryinitiative.com. And then, the last little bit, uh, part is, the Gold Star Mother's Day was designi-, designated by a joint congressional resolution in 1936. I would love to have a proclamation for this next September, or whenever, if, if we could consider that, and has evolved in recent years to be known as Gold Star Family Day. Each year since, the day has been observed by presidential proclamation, and that is my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, so, I found out about this late, um, obviously, in, at a function, I had left a few, um, these, you can see these little light things, and you can get them at Michael's or Hobby Lobby. These luminaries, you can get them on the website, a lot of people just take a, a bag, a white bag, hopefully it's luminescent, but, and just put a star on it or whatever, if you're in a jam, but, like I said, I'm going to get this more prepared for next year to where you can go, I'm going to leave some here at the city, I'm going to leave some at the Veterans Hub tomorrow.
Okay.
Lacey Veterans Hub, and, um, it's, I don't have a lot, I think I have a total of 50, but like I said, I mean, people that really want to do this, um, they, they can get some white bags and some luminaries.
Great, otherwise, they can stop by the Lacey Veteran Services Hub?
Yeah, I'll have some there, and hopefully, we can find a spot out on our counter for, because it's this Sunday, so kind of in the time, times there. And I believe that is it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cox.
I'm reporting on the September 19th meeting of, it was a joint meeting of the Inter-City Transit Authority, as well as our Citizens Advisory Committee. Is it Community Advisory Committee now? They changed the name. Hey. And it was a great opportunity to get together with both groups. Some of the highlights of the meeting were, we've scheduled a public hearing for Wednesday, October 17th, to take comment on the 2019 draft budget for intercity transit, and, um, our maintenance director, Paul Kolberg, gave a just fascinating presentation on alternate technologies, what's out there, the good, the bad, the ugly, and just, it was a very educational thing. There's, there's been a lot of community interest, for example, in going all electric with transit, and Paul's presentation showed us, you know, some good things that are going on with electric, but there, there's a lag between the technology and the infrastructure to make it cost-effective to do that at this point. Electric bus costs twice what a diesel-powered bus costs, and then you have to figure out charging stations, and what is that going to do with our electricity bills, and it, on and on. I mean, I think generally, we're headed in that direction, but we want to let technology improve. And the, the final thing I'll present is that the, um, they recently went through state audit and had an exit interview on the 19th, and there were no findings, which is a really nice place to be in for a public agency like that. I was, I don't want to put my colleague, Michael Stedman, on the spot, but I was unable to attend the Community Action Council Meeting last night.
I, I was in Yakima.
You were not there either, so...
Yeah, at the VFW and events, or...
Okay, so, no report on that, then. Thank you.
Councilmember?
So, I almost forgot, I was, uh, had the privilege of interviewing a, a 30-year-old young man this week, and he was telling me about himself, and he was explaining how he served a few years in the military and injured himself and got out, and they gave him a pamphlet to try to work it out, and, um, he was kind of struggling with that, and then he ended up at the hub, and he has an advocate now that's spearheading a solution for him, and pretty much changed his life, so now he's on his way to getting the benefits and the healing that he needs, so he can carry on, so I just wanted to share that with...
Thank, thank you for sharing that. The amount, the amazing stories that are coming out of our Lacey Veteran Services Hub is unbelievable, the amount of people we've been able to help. My person who I, my personal trainer had an issue that forever and ever and ever and ever, and I said, "Why don't you go over to the Lacey Veteran Services Hub?", and sure enough, he went, and he was able to solve it within a couple of weeks, and he thought he had given up, you know, and so, now, now he had a go-to appointment all the way up in Seattle to get everything fixed, but at least he got the direction, directed him to where he needed to go, and, um, so, it's been a big difference in our community, so I appreciate you saying that. So, before I close today's meeting, it's good to see Chief Point come in. You're not quite retired yet, buddy?
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days.
How many minutes and seconds?
Good to see you here. So, we reached the end of our agenda, so without objection, and I'll call this meeting adjourned, and as always, keep it classy, Lacey.